Good evening. A special meeting of the San Dimas City Council will come to order. On May 13, 2021, city council meetings will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920. All city council chambers will be open at 50% capacity. All attendees must wear masks and observe the six-foot social distancing seating will be limited. Pursuant to the Governor's order dated March 17, 2020, the city council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and make accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of city councilmen or the public for city council meetings are waived. Directions for public comment period will go as follows. There will be three options for members of the public to provide input during this special media agenda item. Public comments will be taken in the following order. Written comments received by email before 5 o'clock will be provided to the council, posted on the website, acknowledged by name and topic, and added to the permanent record. In-person participants. Three, public comments may also be submitted by logging in to the meeting through this link and by calling a dial-by-location phone number. And it will be joint Zoom meetings, and it will be meeting ID 909-394-6200, passcode 6218. You can refer to your agenda for information on how to dial in. There is no 909-394-6206 this evening. Okay, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
FRI, the council chambers video is muted right now.
Okay, we got it, council? Okay. As you can see, there are only four city councilmen here tonight, so I'll have the city clerk call the rule.
Councilmember Bertone?
Present.
Councilmember Ebner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Weber?
Here.
Mayor Bedar?
Here.
Record will reflect there are four councilmembers in attendance. Councilmember Vienna is absent.
Just for the record, Councilman Vienna was en route to this meeting, and he got called back to his regular job. Okay. This meeting is going to cover quality-of-life discussions, presentations by the city departments regarding quality of life in San Dimas. This will include an open discussion in issues in the community, how the city is responding to issues, tools being utilized, and identifying areas where more attention is needed. It says, "A very open, public input is requested and desired for each item." Okay? This meeting will be turned over to the city manager, who will talk about how it's going to be presented. And the majority of this meeting is not going to involve the council other than listening, and the staff will be paying close attention to the input so that we can get what we really believe is a true complexion of what's going on in the community and how people feel. Okay? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This meeting will be a little bit different than traditional meetings in terms of the whole focus is to level-set the community on the services that we're providing and the impacts that we're seeing, and to hear from the community the issues that they have that impact quality of life, as well as the type of solutions that they believe the city should consider. This is not to say that the city and city staff have not identified issues already and possible solutions, but we want to ensure proper, sufficient, and adequate input from the public. And so this session is just the first that involves a council and a special meeting to collect that input. We intend to continue to do that in the next steps in implementing our plan to have a task force that's focused on the quality of life. In terms of what we are going to go over tonight, we will start off with an introduction. And in that introduction, we'll discuss the definition of quality of life in the city's mission statement. I think if we can get the presentation on the Zoom, that would be great. After discussing those two items, we will go through a series of city staff persons that will discuss housing and homelessness, public safety, public works, community development. And then we will lead into an open input from the public with regards to what are our issues and the types of solutions that we should consider and evaluate. Culminating with the discussion of the creation of a quality-of-life task force at the internal city level that will involve staff, residents, business interests, faith-based communities, and nonprofits, to ensure that as we're discussing a variety of matters, they're properly vetted by folks that would be impacted in a variety of sectors, and that we leverage all of our commissions and committees as being a part of that analysis to formulate recommendations to both the city administration and city management. We know that in a community, the perception of the public, the desires of the public, really are what formulate what services we need to provide, as well as the pain points and issues that are deemed by the community are items that we need to be aware of and ensure that we're addressing, and we need to be responsive to our community. So public engagement and public input is absolutely critical. And I think this, as a starting point, will be a good example of us opening our doors and ensuring that we collect as much input as possible. On the next slide, we define quality of life, but that's very nebulous because quality of life is highly subjective. There are a large number of factors that could go into a quality of life, but it comes down to what each resident's perception of what is good and what is bad and what we can do better that determine for that individual resident whether or not I have a high quality of life in this community. When we look at research studies about what factors are looked at in urban quality of life, we have a variety of them that go the whole gamut. They reflect parks, culture of the arts, appropriate transportation, sports grounds and facilities, how dense is your population, public safe spaces such as squares, streets, and pedestrian areas, public safety, the natural environment, cleanliness in the community, the housing market, housing conditions, cost of living, the quality of government services, and the laws that we put into place, how long an individual may live in the community, where they were originally born, their household, income, age, and a variety of other factors that you can look at to determine what is quality of life. So you can imagine, trying to come up with just one definition of quality of life is very complex. But what I tried to do is try to define something generally that encompassed the wide swath of quality of life. So generally, a safe and clean city where residents are engaged, healthy, and committed, where there are opportunities to work, play, and live comfortably, where opportunities are abound, and where the government is responsive to residents' needs. I think does a good job of capturing a wide swath of those factors. And when we get to the next page, we see the city's mission statement, which was adopted in December of 1986. And I've highlighted key phrases in that mission statement. I believe this mission statement still applies in this community, and to the extent that it does not, we should take a look at that and update it to current standards. But we are committed to excellence in the planning of the community. We don't just make decisions and pull a trigger. We properly plan because proper planning prevents poor performance. And we give consideration for the physical and social environment within our community. It's not just about the buildings. It's also about the fabric we weave between our community members. Our employers are committed to well-maintained facilities, of which I've been thoroughly impressed in San Dimas as to how well-maintained some of our hard buildings are, although our streets can take a little more tender-loving care with adequate resources, and being responsive to the needs of residents. We're here to serve the San Dimas residents and businesses and to address their concerns in a cooperative and courteous manner. And as we know now in the advent of social media, cooperative and courtesy is sometimes in short supply. And I think what we need to do tonight is be constructive as a community in addressing what we think are issues that we need to focus on and how we can tackle them, so that in the end, we give all people a sense of belonging to the city. And it starts with this open and professional dialogue between the city council members and its residents. And as we go through this, on the next slide, you will see, "The presentations are intended to level-set all of us in the services and programs that we offer." We are not going to go through and talk about every single department, every single division, and every single program. You will not see a lot talked about parks and recreation because it's fairly common knowledge that parks enhance the quality of life, that trees do, and so does landscaping. And so we don't want to go through those that are obvious. We want to go through some that are not as obvious so that we're all on the same page when we start discussing the issues. We will then start the community dialogue process to determine what issues really impact our quality of life. And the way we're going to do this is we're going to go through the public comment process. We'll first start with the written comments and accept those. We will then go to those who are attending in person and provide three minutes to each individual to talk about a variety of the different issues that they think that we need to be aware of and to address. And as each speaker speaks, I may interject and request and ask additional questions to get clarity, to make sure that we really hone in on specific quality-of-life issues that we can consider and make actionable the response. When we've gone through those that are in person, we will then go to Zoom, both the video Zoom and those who would call in through Zoom to do the same thing. Upon completing that dialogue about the issues of quality of life, we will then move on to the last stage, which is to identify solutions. Now, in my 25 years in government, I've heard a lot of solution about a lot of things, some very effective that could be done and some that will be, are absolutely difficult given case law and other constraints. And so the goal here is not to judge any solution, but just to capture that, to ensure that when somebody recommends, "I think you should do X, Y, and Z," that the task force is thinking about that, or at least having a discussion regarding that and why that may not be the best solution, or that the root cause of a problem isn't best served by that solution, but served by a different solution. And then in the end, we'll talk about next steps, and where do we go from here? The intent of this dialogue isn't to occur just here or a few other times in the community. This is intended to be a long-term realignment of what we do as a city behind the quality-of-life task force and our commissions and committees to provide the council with well-thought-out recommendations for their consideration. So we will first start with Ms. Anne Garcia, who will discuss programs and services through the Housing Division. And I will now hand it over to the speakers.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. My name's Anne Garcia. I'm Senior Administrative Analyst in the Housing Division, and I'm going to share with you some programs and resources and some goals that can come out of our division. Next slide. Our first program is one of our longstanding programs that we offer under our Housing Rehab Program. Our city receives an annual allocation that we fund this program with. It's a grant of up to 7,500 per household that we can use towards eligible projects such as replacement of windows, roofs, and AC. That's our CDBG Housing Rehab Program. The funding's limited, so our goal usually is to assist at least 10 households per year. We start a new waitlist every fiscal year that begins July 1, and there will be a waitlist available for residents to come that first week in July. They can either download it off our city website, or they can pick one up here at City Hall. And then we'll contact you when the applications are out. Under the Housing Rehab Program, we also have a mobile home rehab program that we instigated. It helps households in any of our five mobile home parks. This assistance is a grant form up to $3,000 towards our eligible projects such as windows, water heaters, steps, items like that. This program is also similar in the process as we have for the CDBG Housing Rehab Program. They're both income-qualified, so you'll have to meet the income qualifications in the guidelines. Next slide. Our next program is our Mobile Home Lift Program. As we visited our five mobile home parks, we started noticing that some makeshift ramps on some of these homes, that people couldn't afford to do a ramp or didn't have room to do a ramp to get in and out of their home. So it was kind of cringe-worthy on some occasions. So we came up with this Mobile Home Lift Program, and it's an electronic lift that will bring the individual up or down from their doorway. Some of them didn't have room, like I said, so they were unable to leave their homes, so they were homebound. So this was a program that we think made a big impact to our mobile home residents. The residents have to qualify income-wise. They also have to live in any of the five mobile home parks, and they have to be either legally disabled or diagnosed with a condition that makes it unable or it hinders their ability to go up and down the stairs to qualify. These are some pictures of some of the lifts that we had installed in three of the mobile home parks. Next. Another program that we currently run is our Measure H Homeless Prevention and Diversion Program. This program is funded through the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments' Measure H funding, and it helps residents that have been impacted by COVID. We help with rental assistance, past due utilities bills, and also grocery cards for food insecurities that they may have. It's an income criteria, and also they have to prove that they were financially impacted by COVID by losing a job or loss of hours or had to stay home with kids that had to do virtual schooling. Next. Our housing goals are basically to address blighted and unsafe conditions. We want to also support the character of the existing neighborhood when we do any of our rehab programs. We also work very closely with our code and compliance officers for any code conditions that are out in the community, and the resident is income-qualified and we are able to help, then we help them with our programs, any of our programs that we These are some of our housing goals. We try to make sure that we keep a list of the various housing complexes and locations available for our residents. So we have a housing list that we provide to our residents. It's on our website that you can download and pick one up. But we have a list of all our multifamily complexes, our mobile home parks, contact numbers, and whether they're senior multifamilies or senior families or individuals that are qualified for those different complexes. That's all listed in one place in one document, so that's updated every year, and we have that available on the website and pick it up at City Hall. Next. Okay, I put this slide up because we actually have received multiple calls from residents regarding home improvements, and they want to know if we know of any rebates or things like that. We actually have a webpage on our website on energy resources that we update every other month, and it includes rebates from any of our utility companies. It includes any kind of programs that are out there for home improvement, financing, upgrades, things like that, weatherization, lighting. So that is updated every other month, and they can download, they have links that direct to the applications that they can download, fill out, and apply. So we always make sure that this is updated so the residents can get to that. Next. Next is our homelessness plan. I wanted to provide some background on the homelessness plan that we have here at the city. So in March 2017, the voters approved the Measure H funds, the Measure H program. And then we applied at late 2017 to the county for some funding to do a homelessness plan. So we got awarded that, and then we started the process of creating this plan. And first off was, we met with the Sheriff Department. We had an input session with them to find out what they felt the challenges were and what issues they saw out in the community. Then in March, we had a community input session with the community here at the senior center, and we got their input on challenges and what they felt they saw in the community. On the 13th, we actually had a city council study session to go over the plan of what up to that point. And then in late March, we went with the sheriff, and we did a ride-along to actually interview some of the homeless individuals that we had here in the city to kind of get their feedback on what resources they needed. Then we brought it to council in June and got it approved, and then we submitted that to LA County for approval. And just submitting that made us eligible to apply for some funding for implementation on some of the elements of our homeless plan. So we decided to collaborate. You can go to the next one. Or what was in the plan. I guess I followed the process. The goals and actions are also in the homelessness plan that you'd see. Next slide. So through this implementation that we applied for, we collaborated with the other two cities of Glendora and Laverne, and we created this three-cities program, and it's an outreach program. So we got funding to hire two staff individuals for this program to work just with the three cities. As part of this homelessness plan, the goals that we have, five goals that we are looking at, and the first goal, let's see here. Okay. You're going to see this plan. They're going to be separated by goals and their actions. What you see in yellow is basically what the city is currently doing or currently implementing or working on those action items that are on the screen. So that's the division of that. So the first goal is to better understand the needs of our homeless population. So the actions are ongoing education and examining the connection between the unhoused individuals and their families. So currently, like it's in the red or in the yellow, that staff attends various meetings and trainings offered by LASSA, the COG, and the coalitions. And these organizations have speakers and resources that are shared for services that are currently being offered. Next slide. C and D action item of goal one is to encourage participation in the homeless count and organize technical advisory committee, providing quantitative and qualitative information. Staff currently is, or staff and public safety commissioners and the public and city staff are solicited each year to participate in the count. And the city provides the deployment center and the public safety personnel, in addition to city staff, to help for that evening. Union Station provides, through our implementation grant, they provide monthly data on services provided through our three-cities program contract, and those are items that we use to address those two action items. The next slide is goal number two, which is to ensure all unhoused individuals are entered into the regional coordinated entry system. Action item A and B are to increase coordination between the city and regional partners for outreach and identify our SPA3 lead. So what we're doing right now is, we went through a problem-solving training through LASSA and attend various regional homeless coalition meetings to stay on top of all the resources, partner information, and challenges that others are facing, and how they are meeting those challenges. Then we bring it back to the city and try to see how we can apply it here, or if it even applies. Our contract with Union Station also helps us with this goal and action items as they submit to us the information, data, and they also have the ability to input individuals in the CES system. Next slide. Goal number three is to expand and improve immediate housing solutions. The action item is to explore opportunities to fund housing options to provide shelter to the homeless. As part of our homeless implementation grant, the city was awarded to help implement elements of our homeless plan. So some funds were targeted towards the motel voucher program operated by our contracted provider, Union Station, homeless services. If we need to house an individual or a family in an emergency, Union Station provides a credit card to the hotel or motel, and then they follow up with the individual within 24 hours. The homeless individual must agree to take part in the program and be willing to follow through with services offered in order to be covered by our motel voucher program. The list you see in red are other programmatic housing activities that may be eligible for Measure H funds and fall within the homeless initiative strategies. The letter and number you see are the strategy it's tied to under the homeless initiative strategies. That's the F3 and the F6 and things. So... The next slide. Action item B and C is to work with partnering cities and engage local landlords. So we are partnering with the other two cities, Laverne and Glendora. So we are working on that, following through on those action items. We're also contracted with Union Station, and we budgeted for two of their staff to be focused on our three cities. Through their contract, they've held one landlord outreach workshop to introduce and inform our local area landlords about the rapid rehousing program and bridge housing programs to get them comfortable with the process. Next slide. Action item D is to ensure service providers and staff understand that rapid rehousing program and the referral system. Again, Union Station is contracted to help with providing outreach and referrals and the rapid rehousing program. We have currently, out of the implementation funds, about $85,500 that's programmed towards rapid rehousing. And currently, we have six that are in the rapid rehousing program. Next slide. Goal four is to expand opportunities for employment and workforce development. Action item A and B were to explore partnering with agencies and organizations and ensure partners are familiar with the programs available. So staff created a homeless resource guide that outlines the referral process and lists our partners and resources available for our homeless or individuals on the verge of becoming homeless. I think all of you got a copy of the resource guide, and I did put some out in the back table. So if any of you would like to grab one, you can grab one, and it has all our resources. And we'll be updating that annually. Next slide. Goal number five, explore options for preservation and existing affordable housing. Action item A is to continue to engage with the county and LA CDA to identify funds for rehab and preservation of existing affordable stock. So staff continues to maintain a rental assistance program for assistance with space rent at our charter Oak Mobile Home Park. And about 20 households have applied and have been awarded for that assistance. Staff has also been in multiple conversations with the owners of Sunnyside Senior Apartments, the 34 bond units that are expiring on December 1st of this year. While the owners have decided to keep the affordability on those units until March 2024, this will allow the residents in these units the opportunity to plan to stay or move if they can't make that rent once it goes up to market rate. Staff continues to monitor the 26 units at Avalon for their affordability. And we also, so every year, we request annual income updates on the residents residing in those units to make sure they continue to qualify for that program. We also continue to monitor the nine units at Grove Station and Village Walk with annual residency certification for the affordability covenants. So every July, we get that certification from them. Next slide. So some of our homeless challenges are basically servicing the individual needs of our different homeless population. As you look in the pamphlet, we have general population, which is adults. And then we have family populations, which is two people, the mom or the child, or dad or a child. And then we have the youth population. So we have three different populations that we have to meet and service. It becomes a challenge because not all partners service all populations. Some partners just service adults, some just service youth, some just service families. And you can't have families or youth in with adults. So there's a separation that has to happen, and it becomes a challenge. Aligning services and personnel resources in an efficient manner is also a challenge. A regional issue is a challenge because you've got other cities that the homeless, you know, are going through our city and going to the other. So it becomes, the regional issue is a challenge. Visual, sanitary issues, and sufficient housing. There's not enough sufficient housing for that and services. Next slide. Actually, before that slide, sorry. I wanted to bring to your attention that during COVID, we created a couple of resource guides to help our community get through some of the challenging times. So we created a resident resource guide and a business resource guide. And they're both on our city's website in the front page. We wanted to centralize all the information that was out there and bring it to one place where the residents can just download and look at, the residents can look at utility programs that were available for COVID, people that were financially impacted by COVID, banking information. You're looking at federal, state, county, and local programs that were available. Then we had families that were asking for, well, do you have any information on tutoring? And things, because they were doing homebound schooling. So we created some pages in there that had some tutoring and online services that they can tag on to. So that was the residential. Then the business community, we created a business resource guide that had federal, state, county, local, and private organizations in there that offered grants and loans and services, free advertising, things like that for the business community. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and to the community's attention, that it's on our website. The resources are there. If you don't find something that you're really looking for, just give us a call, and maybe we can help you out. But that's the end of my presentation, so thank you.
Thank you, Anne. As you can tell, Anne does a wonderful job with all our housing programs. And this was the longest part of the presentations for a reason. She didn't go through every program that she manages. There's dozens and dozens of different programs. And we know that in our community, impacts of homelessness and unhoused, food insecurities are issues that impact our quality of life. But what goes hand in hand with those issues also go with the need to have 24-hour boots on the ground, and that's where our sheriff's department comes in. And so today, we have Captain Ashrafnia and I believe our speaker Sergeant Robert Long, who will present to you a verbal report about what the sheriff's department is currently doing.
Good evening, council, everyone in attendance. Thank you for having me. Sergeant Rob Long, I run the community action team in the city of San Dimas Sheriff's Station under Captain Ashrafnia's command. I'm here, obviously, we're here for quality of life issues, and I'm going to focus on mainly one, which is the homelessness. Because from our perspective, that's the main thing we deal with is quality of life, is when there's homeless in your shopping center, along the street, sitting at the bus stop, you know, waking up in the morning and you see someone laying in the park or something like that. So I'm going to focus my little presentation to that. So as you can be, as you're all aware, a common issue in the area we seem to deal with daily on our side is homelessness, whether it's a call for service or just us driving down the street and seeing them down Benita or wherever. Although the homeless population in San Dimas is not as high of a volume as other cities, we have seen an increase in our homeless population in the city. We must remember that it's difficult to measure the population because they come and go. Sometimes we have one homeless person here for a week, they're gone for a couple of weeks. I was looking today, in fact, I can attest to that today. A couple of people that I know that are usually here, they're not here. So every week and every day, it kind of fluctuates. But we've identified approximately seven to 13 that are consistent in and out daily, weekly, monthly. Those are ones that stay in the San Dimas area. Although some of the transients commit crimes, many of the homeless in there are not drug users or criminals. They're just homeless people. To one, it may seem the homeless population's increased due to the motels in the city with lower rates. But actually, the local hotels, motels raise the rates in an effort to minimize the possibility of problematic clientele. The local shelters, we have a few of them around, provide assistance during the winter months for the transient population. Some of the people accepting help from the local charities choose to stay in the area due to the generous nature of the residents in the community. It's a good thing, but it has both, you got to see both sides of that. What we're doing to kind of help with that problem is we're, our deputies and the community action team, my team, some of which are here, continuously conduct homeless encampment operations and outreach once any locations are identified. Homeless encampments are technically five or more people living in close proximity to one another. I have been here over a year. I have not seen, by definition, homeless encampment in the city. But we do, we do have our homeless folks pop up here and there. Most of them are transitory. The CAT team partners with Union Station, like Ms. Garcia said, Union Station Homeless Services. In fact, the CAT team, the community action team, and I partner with Union Station on a monthly. We go out physically with them. We go with them to talk to some of the homeless folks. And we actually seek out, we go deeper into the community where in fact, me and my team actually crawl into some of the canyons and the bushes. And we actually try to get as many people we can on the day we have Union Station with us physically to seek out anyone that would accept help or needs help. And Union Station actually tracks them. They keep records. Anyone we deal with on a daily basis or have identified that needs help on a daily basis without Union Station being around, we and the deputies at the station actually have referral cards to Union Station personnel who will then follow up with them, hopefully. If they have a cell phone, which surprisingly, the majority of them do have cell phones, we can provide them a number because usually if we're contacting them, they're going to move. They don't want to make, they don't really want to make a lot of contact with us. But every time we do contact a homeless person, knowing that they're not all criminals, in fact, some of the local ones in the downtown area are actually liked by many people. I've had many conversations recently with some of the homeless, in fact, just across the street here. And I was approached to make sure I was being humane and nice to the person I was talking to, and actually was thanked afterward because that's not my style, that's not my team's style. We're not here to make anything worse for somebody, we're here to try to help them. So we continue to do the patrols in areas known to be frequented by our homeless population. We have a few that tend to go to the same places. If they're not in one place, they're in another. But like I said, our numbers here in the city are, I guess you can call it manageable. We know who they are. It's not so many that it's out of control. We don't know who's coming and going. If there's a new person, we do know who it is. The CAT team deputies go around the city. We identify, we make face-to-face contact, and we update Union Station with any changes or moves. We also let them know if somebody wants to have help. We offer everyone we contact, even if it's a call for service where they did something wrong. If we find out that they're homeless, we try to find out why they're homeless and if they will accept services. So if there's a low-level crime, we're still willing, we want to help them out because obviously, we want them off the streets. Sorry, I'm going to refer to a couple of things here, I don't want to forget anything. My team and the deputies at the station work closely with the city. If there is a homeless area we see, and then it's, the person has moved on and there's debris or trash left, the city's awesome about coming and helping us clean it up. If there's anything that we think might be someone's, something valuable to somebody other than ourselves, we'll document it and then we'll store it appropriately. We're not trying to throw everything away. The CAT team deputies make frequent contact, the CAT team, when I say CAT team, it's normal to me. CAT is Community Action Team for the city. The CAT team deputies make frequent contacts with the known homeless in the area. We build relationships with them, some of them at a personal level, myself included, in an effort to get them to accept services. In our experience making these contacts, I've been dealing with homeless issues for many years in many different cities. And honestly, the majority of people that we identify as homeless, they don't even accept the services we offer. So that's not a new thing to me. It's surprising to some people, it's not new. Many of the calls for service the sheriff's station receives from the public are the same transients repeat doing something, the same thing they've done before. We need to remember that being homeless is not a crime. And then along the same lines, equality of life are disorderly conduct-type calls. And for example, people using the restroom in public, sleeping on sidewalks or in front of businesses, trash dumping. And then another basic one is graffiti. So in this city, the majority of our graffiti that we find is done by our local juveniles. Just this week, we made a few arrests of some local juveniles that like to do their artwork on some of the city's property. But these calls are not a high-call volume in the city. I'm just throwing that stuff out there because, other than homelessness, all these other things go kind of hand in hand with homelessness. The quality of life issues may vary from one area to another, like Mr. Constantine said earlier. Some areas have parking complaints from the law enforcement side. Some areas have speeders. Some are closer to businesses, which cause different issues in itself. The issues can vary throughout the city. Whatever the issue, we as a sheriff's department are here to try to resolve them for you or at least offer some kind of suggestion or something that'll get the ball rolling in the right direction. One way, one thing I've known is to combat some of the homeless issues I think that we see locally are to have, like Anne was saying, a wraparound service. Some additional resources, social workers, shelters, some transitional housing. And I know we have some upcoming meetings to kind of address some of those things as well. But that's what I have, if anyone wants it.
Thank you, Sergeant Long. And the obvious, our deputies do a wonderful job. We lay leverage technology with the flock camera system, have found violent offenders, identity theft, individuals, suspects who have stolen mail out of mailboxes, and the inevitable catalytic converter thefts that seemingly permeate every community in Southern California. So wonderful job to our sheriff's department. In terms of when I asked the question, and I'll ask it today, what service, if it disappeared today, would you be frustrated with the quickest? Very rarely have I gotten the right answer to what I think the answer to that question is. I look at what service would be the worst? It would be a utility. If I flush the toilet and the water doesn't go away, it's a problem. If I turn on the faucet and the water doesn't arrive, that's a problem. If there's no power to my house, that's a problem. Those are all public works-related services that our utilities and public works and many agencies are responsible for. Our public works department does an absolute phenomenal job. When you drive down a roadway that's an above-average condition, you don't always think about, wow, how great it is to drive on this roadway. But if that roadway was full of potholes and you're driving through it 20 miles less than the speed limit, you definitely will be complaining about how terrible these streets are. And so some of the most major assets of the city fall under public works, and there are issues that arise, that take a long time to arise. And that same department not only handles those, they handle a tremendous amount of quality of life issues. So I'll turn it over to our public works director to talk more about the issues that they face on a daily basis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And I saw some commissioners here and then members of the public. My name is Sherry Garwick, and I'm the Director of Public Works. There are many, many factors that contribute to the quality of life. Providing an environment that residents feel comfortable and allow them to safely go about their everyday business is of critical importance. Inviting an efficient design of streets and facilities is an important part of this, a very important or very complicated concept. On the upper left on the screen is a picture of a downtown project that was completed a few years ago, where the sidewalks were widened to allow more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere and to allow outdoor dining. The ability to have outdoor dining was especially important when COVID hit in 2020. On the right is a civic center, which was also used for outdoor gatherings and community events as well. Next slide, please. Another important aspect of quality of life is maintaining public areas. We have picked up over 1,500 shopping carts this year and have seen a significant increase in dumping of trash and debris. No one wants to have illegal dumping goods in their front yard or to serve as a landmark on their evening walks. Proactively removing these types of blight creates a better visual quality of life as it makes the neighborhood more inviting for residents to get out. But it also serves a much more basic function as it removes the breeding grounds for harmful vectors and disease as well as protects the environment by preventing trash from getting into the storm drain. Next slide, please. What we do now to protect the environment plays a key role in the quality of life of not just our lives, but also the lives of future generations. The city has many programs designed to protect the environment. There's a few pictured in the slide. We respond to spills, to clean up hazardous waste or oil or anything that can get into the storm drain and pollute our rivers. With COVID, we've seen a significant increase in the need to wash the outdoor dining areas in the downtown. Who wants to walk in a smelly, dirty area? Much less dine there. We also prevent spills from contaminating the streams and groundwater. And to this end, the city conducts bi-weekly street sweeping on every street to remove debris and to help keep our streams and oceans healthy. These are aspects not typically associated with the quality of life. You don't look at a street sweeper and think, that's making my life better. But if it's not there, and you get standing debris in your curb and gutter, you get vectors and other issues that come about. Another integral element of the quality of life involves getting our residents and visitors safely and efficiently where they want to go. In 2019, over 95% of the San Dimas residents commuted to work with their automobile. They have an average commute time of just over 33 minutes. We have roads where there's 33,000 vehicles per day. Our city's population is around 35,000. Traffic congestion has long been associated with life in Los Angeles. We are continuously monitoring, upgrading, and maintaining our street network to provide for the safe needs of our residents and visitors. So the image on the upper left is not San Dimas. We incorporate new technology and new requirements such as traffic signal timing and detection that includes bikes as well as vehicles and pedestrians. We are implementing synchronized traffic signals on several key corridors to get you to and from home more efficiently. And while you don't notice it, striping plays a key component of keeping vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles safe on the roadway. You don't notice it until it's not there. If you've ever driven the freeway and they, when they're doing the paving or construction, and there's no lane lines, it's a harrowing experience. Okay, next slide, please. Another item that's typically overlooked in quality of life is when you have three teenagers at home and no internet for a week. So one of our key components is providing necessary utilities to our residents. As the city manager mentioned, try going without water for a day or two days. Not fun, for those around you too. While the city is responsible primarily for sewer and most of the storm drains, Public Works manages the right-of-way to ensure our residents have access to all of our utility purveyors. This includes electricity, glass, water, cable, and internet. As the infrastructure ages, these utilities need to, need repair and upgrade their services. Public Works ensures that these repairs get done in a way that allows for safe public travel during the construction, but also protects the long-term life of the roads that our residents use to get to and from their destinations. So on the upper left, there's a water line that was repaired on Gladstone just this past year. And the image on the bottom right depicts a street. On the surface, it looks pretty clear and room for lots of pedestrians and vehicles. But underneath that street, it actually gets pretty busy. It's where all your utilities are. It's our job to permit repairs, make sure that the traffic control is safe, and that the roads don't get closed unless they absolutely have to. Next slide. Another critical element for us is community engagement. And anytime you look up quality of life, one of the, one of the key aspects of it is community engagement. And that's, one of our goals is, is to make sure that we're engaging with the community in multiple ways. Many of the obstacles facing our society, such as the impacts of trash disposal caused by closure of landfills, or water quality, or air quality concerns, cannot be overcome without support and participation by the community, without education, and without their feedback. Our residents are who determine what is important for their quality of life, for now and into the future. It's important for us to keep that dialogue open, and we do many different tools and mechanisms to try to keep it open. We've had community outreach events. We send flyers. We're up on Facebook and we, and on the city website. And also oddly enough, we receive a lot of feedback via phone call. So we appreciate those, because we get, it lets us respond quicker. Okay, next slide, please. We have approximately 35,000 customers that have to be served by under 20 people in our department. So we have to make use of technology whenever possible. These are some of the tools that we have and that we use daily. On the right is a pavement report that is provided monthly by our pavement management system, where we keep track of the, every single street and the status of the pavement condition. We also have permit tracking, software that allows us to track the permits that are used on a timely basis, or see that permits are issued on a timely basis. We are implementing traffic synchronization to more efficiently manage traffic through the city. There's still more that can always be done to help provide our residents with a better quality of life. Next slide, please. So here are some areas of focus. First and foremost, in our minds, is traffic safety and really, speed enforcement. On the upper left shows a statistic, actually, of survivability of a pedestrian in a pedestrian vehicle accident. At 20 miles an hour, the pedestrian has a 90% survival chance. At 40 miles an hour, it's a 10% survival chance. So reducing and controlling speeding in our neighborhoods is critically important to all of us. At our next traffic safety meeting alone, we have six items that center around speeding. So to meet these needs, the city has contracted for an additional traffic, enforce a motorcycle officer to enforce traffic. And we look forward to evaluating and making effective use of this asset. We have approximately $330 million of infrastructure to maintain. Replacing and maintaining our infrastructure at the right times can prevent injuries and save us any money. Asset management programs are an integral to enabling efficient and cost-effective renewal of our infrastructure. We're also going to face many challenges to comply with state mandates in the next year for both stormwater and trash. There's going to be a new stormwater permit with new requirements for our businesses and that the city has to meet requirements. There's also new organic recycling requirements for trash. The second, the trash requirements will directly impact residents monetarily due to rising costs of trash disposal. Residents will also need to change how they dispose of organic waste. Finally, as a city, we have to strive to continue to improve upon our residents' quality of life. We need to predict and design for the changing needs of our residents. This includes looking at opportunities to incorporate multiple modes of travel in our roadway designs. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Sherry. In our last department, our Planning Division is when we talk about the phrase, "proper planning prevents poor performance." Planning is a multi-decade impact through the general plan, our zoning, our design standards. Just this week, there was an article I read about a collapse of a balcony at a house in Malibu with 15 individuals that are on that balcony. It's the building divisions of cities that ensure the standards of the design of those type of balconies are safe for individuals. And so while we may look at a house, a structure, and think, how, what does building have to do with quality of life? Knowing that we're safe in any structure that we go into is exactly that, and that's through the Community Development Department. But then it's the Code Enforcement Division of the Community Development Department that does the heavy lifting, similar to what you see in the Sheriff's Department. And now our Community Development Director will present the quality-of-life issues that are dealt with through his department, and it's pretty outstanding in terms of the performance of what his staff does.
Thank you, Mr. Constantine. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public. Henry Ngo, Director of Community Development. The Community Development Department is committed to maintaining and improving our community while preserving its character, and we have four divisions. As Mr. Constantine mentioned, the Planning, Building and Safety, Code Compliance, and the Housing Division, which Ann presented earlier. The Planning Department plays a critical role in achieving the city's goals and objectives relative to land use, zoning regulations, and urban design. Our team is focused on planning for and providing quality developments that enhances the quality of life for our community. Examples of this is the brand-new Brandywine Development, which is a single-family residential project located southwest of San Dimas Avenue and Allen Avenue. The Costco Development as well. The mission of the Building Department is to protect the lives and safety of our community by verifying and inspecting building structures to ensure that they are built in compliance with all local and state codes. Code Compliance is responsible for verifying that our city regulations are being abided by, and our primary goal is to achieve voluntary compliance throughout our city. Tonight, I wanted to highlight some of the items that are currently affecting our community's quality of life and how we are currently trying to address these. Some of these items you've heard already, but I wanted to highlight them as well. Recently, our community has seen an increase in graffiti, and we coordinate with the Sheriff's Department and a private contractor in trying to abate graffiti throughout our community. And our goal is to bait them within 24 to 48 hours. It's kind of like the broken window syndrome, where if you leave it alone, the quicker you bait it, it doesn't spread. So we try and abate these as quickly as possible. We also work with property owners, the Public Works Department, and Waste Management to assist in cleaning up trash and illegal dumping. In coordination with the Sheriff's Department, our homeless liaison, and other organizations, we try and assist individuals in need by providing resource information and services if they, if they want them. RV parking and habitation can lead to health and safety concerns, and we work with the Sheriff's Department closely to try and alleviate these issues the best that we can. Shopping carts within the public right-of-way and public property are unsightly and can be unsanitary. We inform the business of their shopping carts to pick them up, or if they don't, in a timely fashion, we coordinate with our Public Works Department to assist in removing them. And if they do have personal property, we make sure to notice it for 72 hours or make sure that we store it and tag them. Some additional parking issues include inoperable vehicles, as shown on the top left. Commercial vehicles parked on residentially zoned properties. And storage of recreational vehicles and passenger vehicles on unimproved surfaces. Lastly, our department, we work with property owners and the Fire Department regarding overgrown vegetation to assist in fire prevention and nuisance abatement, which increases our quality of life as well. Now I'll turn it back to our city manager, Chris Constantine.
Thank you, Henry. So you saw over the course of the last hour, a number of different quality-of-life issues and what our departments are doing to tackle that. I should caveat. I've always seen for every one compliment, there are nine criticisms. And we tend to focus on really the negative. And when we focus on the negative, it gives us a perception that things are necessarily negative, when in fact, if we take a step back and look, things are actually quite wonderful. So we heard a lot of negatives in terms of quality of life, but I want to make something clear. San Dimas is a safe, amazing, wonderful community to live, work, and play right now. It is. While we talk about issues of quality of life now with the public speakers as we go forward, we need to remember that that's what we actually are. And what our goal is, is not to take a city that's terrible and make it great. It's to take a city that already is great and make it even better. And we need to focus on that, because it's so easy to just fall on the criticisms. When we have an incident occur, a fatal accident, a death, or something that has some aspect of quality of life, we're very quick to think the whole world is falling around us. A traffic death leads to our streets are unsafe. A death leads to our communities are unsafe, when the reality is, it's not quite that way. But there is a perception that it is, and we need to be aware of it. But we should in the end still focus on what a wonderful community that we are. We will now proceed with opening to the public comments so that we can solicit input. What we will do is we'll first start with the written comments. And as we go into the next stage of the in-person and Zoom comments, we will limit comments to three minutes, allowing speakers to speak on whatever variety of quality-of-life issues that there are. I may ask for more clarity where there's clarity, not where there's more generalism than there is clarity, unless it has already been spoken to before, and the host to really glean what those issues are. I would ask that Johnny do the timer too, I would assume, at three minutes. So I'll turn it over to the clerk to speak to any written comments that we have received on this topic.
Mayor, Council, members of the public, the city clerk's office received public comments from the following individuals on tonight's presentation on quality of life. Christina Mortazavi, Phil Ebner, Amanda Lee, Sean Cesares, and Betty Jean Lamb. Those comments were added to the city's website. They've been provided to the council, and they will be made part of the permanent record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will start with our first public speaker, and I'd ask that you introduce your name so that we can actually put that in the record and be able to ask questions back.
Is there a speaker card out there, number one? The second speaker up is Carmen Santiago from Chutter Oak Mobile Homes.
If you may step forward to the microphone, and then we will begin your three minutes at that time.
Good evening to all. Thank you. The four of us, we are residents of Chutter Oak Mobile Homes for seniors. And this evening, we have been having strangers walk through and youth walk right through the park. And this is causing us to lock our windows and lock our doors. The youth comes in, and they've been caught jumping the back fence to go into the Target Shopping Center. It's a quick walk and a quick jump. And this disturbs us all. We also, we feel that it's time for us to have a gate, an electric gate that we can open up with a whatever gadget, if it's a card or anything like that, that we all can have and feel safer. And because this has caused a big concern for us. I've been living at the park going on eight years, and I plan to stay there until my calling comes. Another issue that we have, in the back of the park, there's so much trash, mattress, carpet. This has caused more rats to walk around. I had one on Saturday on top of my roof. And these are rats, they're not mice. And no one comes in and cleans up all that trash, and it's taken a part of it. And we need help. We need to keep the park clean and get rid of all this trash and objects that are there. And that's our concern, and thank you for your time to all.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago.
Speaker number three is Cindy Williams, speaking on quality of life in Sandy Mas.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for having this meeting. It's really important. Cindy Williams, I live on Second Street, and I have Old Town Antiques in Sandy Mas, right downtown. Been there going on 29 years, and I can tell you that we've never had a problem like we do now. I think I talked to you before, I found them sleeping in my car, my truck, in front of everything, but we are blessed. We have an amazing sheriff department, and they come every time we need help, so I'm very thankful. We have an amazing city that has really responded to everything we need. But I shouldn't have to go to Dollar Tree and have someone sleeping and living in front of Dollar Tree. I realize COVID has caused major problems, and I understand that. And the things that you're doing tonight and the information that's been given is so vital for us. Ann's presentation was excellent. The problem is, the people want it. They have to want the help. And unfortunately, a large percentage of the people that we have, they don't want the help that's available. What a great program the sheriffs have, reaching out. Again, if they don't want the help, there's not much they can do. But for those of you that know me, I play a lot of softball and I travel, and I can tell you that we are lucky. I was in Vegas playing, showed up early to play. It took the city and the police department over an hour to get our fields ready because of the homeless encampments and the dirt that was on our fields to play softball. I traveled to downtown Riverside to play. It's a mess. So listen tonight, I know that you've experienced it also. I'd be very interested in serving on a business committee that you spoke about as a businessperson, but it is vital, it's vital to our way of life here. We spent our time and our energy, I've spent not only my home that I own, but my business, and I'm willing to, you know, give any input that's needed. But again, thank you for what you're doing, and I want you to know that we appreciate everything, and thank you, sheriffs.
Speaker number three, Johanna Nosara. Is she here?
Good evening to all of yous. My name is Johanna Nosara. I live at Charter Oaks Mobile Park, and my concern with the lady that spoke before about the garbage by the gate is piled up so high. I talked to the manager, she said she would do something about it. Nothing is done. This is going on over a year, okay? I called the police department, they can't do too much. Fire department, I called, they can't do it. So who do we have to call in order to clean all that up? Now, it's getting hot again, and it's a fire hazardous to our homes, okay? And I don't know what else to do, how to address it, because after a while, you kind of give up. Nothing is being done in Charter Oaks Mobile Park. The manager doesn't want to know anything. I've had arguments with her, disagreements, she ignores me. She thinks I'm a troublemaker. I'm only concerned for all of us in the park, I'll be quite honest with you. And then second thing, Anna Garcia is here. I'd like to address to her personally. I've, let's see, I've been there about nine years in the park. I submitted forms that I needed help in getting central air. My windows do not open up to get air. Every time I call them, oh, it's either we don't have enough grant, which is a lie. Number two, they never call you back. And I've reached a point, I do what I can, even central air, I called them upon it. Now I'm there nine years, I keep my place neat, clean, outside and in. They always think I'm a troublemaker because I speak my piece. I've reached a point now, I do everything on my own, and that's it. So I'd like to see what she's going to say. I wonder if she's going to call me and say, "Don't worry about it, we'll go and check your windows," or "You need central air." I had to put my own air conditionings in, and I don't get a lot in social security. So I use credit cards, and then I pay it off when I get my social security. Is that any way to live in a park that won't address it? So I get to the point now, I do what I can, and that's it. That's all I have to say. I thank you for the time.
There's a speaker card for speaker number four, there's no name. The topic was homeless encampment at Sandy Mas. Homeless encampment at Sandy Mas Canyon above Golden Hills, where there was a fire in multiple tents, treehouses. Many residents' fire coverage or homeowners' insurance canceled. Speaker number four, anyone here to speak on that? Speaker number five, Adrian Vasquez, regarding RV and trailer parking. Speaker number six, Eric or Erica, addiction and the dangers they present.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Wague. The last name is spelled W-A-A-G-E. I'm a resident of Sandy Mas since 1999. I love living here. My family, there's my wife over here, Camille, and we have two kids, and they're in the public school system. And actually, I teach at Sandy Mas High School. I'm one of the teachers on staff there. And can you guys hear me okay? All right. And I wanted to thank you for having this meeting. I really appreciate that you're interested in my perspective. I hope to share with you a couple of stories that might help to give you a perception that I'm noticing an increase in. Like I said, since 1999, I've lived here, and I occasionally would need to call the sheriff about a problem, and they were always awesome, always responding right away. I really appreciate the sheriffs. I love them, they are awesome. And the increase of my calling, maybe it's because I'm getting old and I get bothered by things more often, but there's also been a lot more occurrences where I felt like I needed to get the sheriff to help me with something. It usually involves people that are bringing their personal belongings and laying them on public space. And I don't feel safe with my kids traveling through that area. And on the high school recently, it was actually this week, we had an individual who left the hospital, Sandy Mas Community Hospital, and decided to enter the campus. He went into the girls' restroom and exposed himself to one of our students. And I know that the school board is addressing the security issues, so I don't expect city council to address the security of the school. I know that people are working on that. But I think it's helpful to understand that somebody who maybe is dealing with addiction is not thinking about others and instead very focused inward on their own personal needs and doing things that I think the community does not want to see. The perception in having open dialogue with my students is that, to quote a student, Sandy Mas is whack, and I think a good interpretation of that is that they don't feel safe anymore on campus, you know? And here we are, returning to campus in person. I would love for my students to be excited about that and not have to have that perception that Sandy Mas is whack, for lack of a better term. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you guys was, you know, there's not really time. I just want to thank you so much for being open to listen to my perspective. I would love to see Sandy Mas become a place where I feel safe, taking my kids outside and playing at the parks, and right now, maybe that's diminished somewhat because of recent events. So thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Speaker number seven, Dave Milbrandt, COVID-19 protocols.
Hello, my name is Dave Milbrandt. I've been a resident of Sandy Mas for 20 years, a little bit more, and been working in the city nearly as long. I want to talk briefly about COVID-19 protocols, but Councilman Weber and I were talking a little bit before the meeting, and we kind of addressed those issues, making sure that we're following along with the protocols, perhaps reacting proactively along with the CDC guidelines, that we can open up and be as active as we can be, and encouraging the county to work with us. But I was really excited to hear about the idea of the task force and the idea of expanding these quality of life concerns and issues and looking more into them, and would love to serve on that and any opportunity that might be available to me here. I've worked really well with this city. I've had a chance to work with Sherri Garwick recently regarding some permanent parking issues, very responsive, very helpful. I probably want to apologize to the sheriff. Some of those artists in the community might be some of our students at Sandy Mas High. We're sorry about that, we might know some of them. But we work really well with the sheriff's department and really appreciate their help and assistance on a regular basis. Our SRO is wonderful, and we have good connections there. And I want to expand that. I want to make sure that my experience is not just my experience, but the community's experience. There are 35,000 other people that live in Sandy Mas and those that come through the city and enjoy our services here, that they'll feel welcome and encouraged here. My colleague and good friend Eric Wague over there shares concerns that we have on our campus of the recent incident, but things that are ongoing, that we need to be part of solutions and encouraging those solutions in our community. And again, I'd love to be part of that, and others would as well. And I thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the city council, and the city staff, who are wonderful that I've had a chance to work with, and the ones I haven't yet, have done a great job helping to make the city a wonderful place, and we want to continue that. So we're thankful for that, and we look forward to seeing this continue. So thank you very much.
Next speaker is Andrea Handy, speaking on train vibration and noise.
All right. Can you hear me okay? I'm a little bit of a shorty. I'm going to leave my mask on, I'm still getting used to not having it. How's that? Okay, perfect. So thanks so much for allowing us to come and speak to you today. My name is Andrea Handy, please feel free to call me Andy, and I'm here with my boyfriend, Demi Salas. We recently bought a townhome at the Cedar Creek Townhomes off of Via Vicaro, and when we first moved in, getting used to the train and the noise was something to get used to, but we were able to really figure out just relax and sleep, and that was really nice. About two months ago, in your mission statement, you talk about health and overall living comfortably, and since that time, we have not been able to do so. It seems as though, I don't know if the engines have been upgraded to the MetroLink, perhaps the horns have also been replaced, but since that time, we have not been able to sleep or rest comfortably. What I'd like to request, and I actually, how much, I have two minutes. I want to give you just a little bit of a taste of what it is. And I don't know if you can hear that. That is from inside our living room. And this is from an iPhone 8, so this is not nearly top quality. And so our challenge is, is trying to figure out how we can resolve it. Now, we've looked into our own fixing as far as updating the windows, figuring out some noise-proofing solutions, which unfortunately, we don't have the funds to be able to do that. We just moved here back in October. Solution-wise, I'd like to request if we can continue to look at that space as perhaps a quiet zone. If not, if we can go back to the old horns and the old engines, that would be great because we got used to that just fine. But also, I know we were talking about some of the housing programs and perhaps even creating some programs where we can receive some of those noise-proofing solutions at a lower cost, and perhaps providing a benefit to the local employer, perhaps maybe being able to write off some of those discounts that they provide to the, oh, wait, oh, I'm good, minute warning, to us. And so we are very much open to any solutions anyone has to offer. Currently, we're working on getting some estimates, but we're still trying to identify some of that. The other concern that we have is with the new engines, and we are at the end unit, and it does now vibrate our home. And so it often, we have furniture, not necessarily furniture, but on the walls, you can see vibrating, and my concern is long-term effects of the home and safety. So we've already had to support the beams up in the attic, so we've had to put additional supports there. My concern would be that there would be additional damage as we, we love Sandy Mas, and we want to stay in Sandy Mas, and we hope that we'll have the ability to do so. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, those are all of the speaker cards that's been received by the city clerk. Unless there are any other members in the audience who want to speak.
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak prior to us moving on? Yeah, thank you. Chris?
We'll turn it to now the Zoom calls, so John, if you could take the lead on calling the next speaker.
We are now taking comments for those who are joining us through Zoom. If you wish to take part and are joining us by internet device, please locate the Zoom raise hand feature and click on the hand icon. For those who dialed into Zoom, press star nine on your phone now to raise the hand feature in Zoom. You will be identified by your screen name for internet device and the last four-digit of caller ID for dialed-in participants. Participants will be called upon one at a time in the order that the hand was raised. When called upon, please unmute. To unmute from an internet device, click the microphone button at the bottom. From a phone, press star six. Our first participant is Amanda L. It is your turn to speak. Please unmute your microphone, state your name for the record, and your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name's Amanda Lee. So first off, I also want to start off by saying thank you to not only Mr. Constantine, who kind of initiated this, at least on the forefront, as well as to the staff who came in and, you know, are sharing their experiences and what they are offering and what they do, which many of us may not be aware of here in the community. So I do want to start off by thanking you all for putting in the time and the effort to do that for all of us in the community, so that we can kind of see that side as well. And I look forward to hopefully learning more about it as well as this continues on. I wanted to talk a little bit, and I know others have brought it up, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the homelessness issue, just because I think part of the reason this meeting came into being was out of the pallet shelter idea that came up. I think something that a lot of residents may not be understanding is that a lot of this, a lot of these resources come out of grants that are offered from one, you know, either state, federal, or county or whatnot. So the city has to apply for those grants, and oftentimes, as with the pallet shelters, speaking with Mr. Constantine about it, that actually came up as, you know, you have to apply or you lose it. So I think sometimes we jump the gun, just assuming like, oh my goodness, there's this thing coming, and, you know, that's kind of a scary idea. So sometimes we have to slow down a little bit. So I do look forward to hopefully being able to take advantage of those grants and helping those in our community that are in need. Homelessness is not a new thing. I would agree, I personally have I personally have noticed it a little bit more. I was just driving around town today over to Chick-fil-A in Glendora, and, I mean, I can't tell you how many people I'm passing that at least, the way they present themselves to the public, it seems like they're homeless. The other issue that I wanted to bring up was pedestrian and bicycle safety, something that I hope we can look into more, is looking into grants for putting in the continued bike path through the Bonita downtown corridor there, as well as on cataract, which leads all the way to the high school and San Dimas Avenue and San Dimas Canyon, just because those are some very popular bicycle traffic ways. And it's a little bit difficult to ride your bike there safely, and with the gold mine coming in, I think that would really improve our city, having an area that, you know, encourages pedestrian and bike rather than larger vehicles. So, I look forward to hopefully hearing more about that. Thank you so much.
Next participant, Sean C. It's your turn to speak. Please unmute your microphone, state your name for the record, and your three minutes starts now.
Good evening, city council and members of the audience. My name is Sean Casares, and I've been a lifelong resident of San Dimas. There are four crucial ideas I would like to see come to fruition and the city to tackle. Number one, public safety. We have seen the many incidents in this community, whether it be catalytic converter theft, mail theft, and the unfortunate incident that took place in Lone Hill Park. I would like to see more national night-out events that bridge the community in law enforcement. Dialogue is necessary. More emphasis on self-defense courses that empower the vulnerable in our community, and finally, to a giant effort in tandem with the city council, Public Safety Commission, and San Dimas Sheriff's to encourage and recruit residents to become certified. I believe this will prepare us for what is to come when the gold line comes through and when a major catastrophe were to occur. Number two, homelessness. We as residents of San Dimas are known for our charity and show of being good stewards to those in need. I really like the voucher program that the city has available to those, for those who experience homelessness. Letting a hundred flowers bloom and thought on ideas to help our homeless should be welcome. I think it was last council meeting that an idea was brought up about affordable housing, and during the campaign, Councilman Weber brought up a concept that we could implement here. Community saying is a must in this manner, and no underhandedness, like the county supervisors did with Project Room Key, is warranted. Three, city events. Councilman Weber's idea for a drive-in movie was fantastic, and Parks and Rec's 2019 Christmas event really brought back good memories when the city used to have events on Bonita. We need more creativeness and innovation in events like these. When Pioneer Square is completed, I hope we can have what the city of Covina does with their Thunderfest car show. And four, culture and heritage. San Dimas has a rich history in its southwest western heritage. With this, many cities, many states of ethno-civilization that have contributed to this identity should be preserved. We shouldn't become a concrete jungle like the city of Los Angeles, lost in modernity. As such, I am supportive for efforts to keep our standards high and buildings low, to borrow an expression from Councilman Alawes from Glendora. What is sought is never to return to the past, but taking the best of living tradition and projecting it into the future, an archaeofuturism, a concept developed by Guillaume Hé. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
There are no other hands raised at this time. However, if you wish to provide your comment via Zoom, please use the hand raise feature now to indicate that you wish to speak.
So, it doesn't look like anybody else is there. So, we will move on to the next section, which I don't expect to necessarily be as long as this one, because we did hear about some solutions. What are the types of solutions that the city should consider? And what we provided on the slides are several questions as prompts for individuals. So, what solutions do you think we should consider? Are there activities that the city is doing that you would like to see expanded, enhanced, or reduced? And then, what role should residents play in the solution? And we ask that folks highlight what kind of solutions we should consider, so we can compile the list. So, with that, I'll turn it to the first public speaker. And if we don't have cards, anybody who has, who's in the public who'd like to speak could step forward.
Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, Chris?
We will then move on to the Zoom calls. John?
Again, if you wish to comment, please use the hand raise feature now. Participant Amanda L., please go ahead.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what this comment period is about? I, somehow, I just totally blanked it. My apologies. People may not understand clearly what we're able to comment about.
The first one was talking about what are the issues we need to address. This period is about the kind of solutions that we should implement. For example, my issue is that it's speeding. My solution, city, you need to hire more traffic officers. So, what we're trying to compile is that list of type of solution that we may not necessarily be aware of or that should be emphasized.
Okay, perfect. Then I do have one comment, if I still have time.
Yes.
Okay. I had brought up, so I don't have a solution for the homelessness issue, just because I think that it's such a complex issue that I think is going to require a lot more work with people that are actually qualified. I personally am not qualified to do that, but I do have a comment in regards to pedestrian and bicycle safety. I was speaking with someone that resides in Laverne, where they had put in some really nice bike lanes, you know, those nice green bike lanes. I think we have some of them that come up, Bonita up to San Dimas as well. And she had let me know that actually, part of that was because they received a grant. Otherwise, that probably would not have gone in. So, my suggestion is, in hopes, again, I honestly don't know how often those grants come up, but if the city can maybe look a little bit more into finding money or grants or some kind of solution for at least continuing bike lanes in areas that they're very much needed. So, again, all the way down Bonita, I would say arrow, but I don't know if the width of that road will allow a bike lane safely, based on the measurements of lanes and how much space a bike lane takes, as well as completing sidewalks. So, I think that has become a little bit of an issue in many areas, predominantly on, for me anyway, is on Bonita on the side of Casa Del Rey. There is no sidewalk right there. I don't know if that's going to be resolved with the gold mine construction that's going in, so I don't want to jump to the conclusion that, you know, that might be an issue that's already been resolved. But I would really love to see, you know, sidewalks not only completed, but be wide enough for people to push strollers down these sidewalks without literally almost feeling like you're going to fall off of the sidewalk. There's a couple areas within our downtown area where pushing like a jogging stroller or something is very difficult to do. I would love to have a downtown space that really does encourage more pedestrian access. So, again, just working on bike, you know, lanes and finding grants for those, or even grants for the sidewalk. I hope that, you know, maybe our city can look into that a little bit more, if they haven't been doing it already. I, again, it could be something you guys are already looking into, and I'm just assuming it's not. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Sean C. Please go ahead with your comment.
Well, this is, you know, it's some, this multi-faceted thing that we're going through, and I would say, for me, the big issues would be public safety and homelessness now. With homelessness, I think we should do a multi-layered approach in terms of finding a solution to this. So, something that doesn't work, something that works in Pomona, Pomona may not work in San Dimas, but at least taking the spirit of that idea and bringing it to San Dimas, I think is something that the council should look into. Being open with ideas and using whatever tools possible to help alleviate the situation and give needed resources to those who are in need with, I mean, our Senator, Senator Portantino, when it comes to the housing element, he has a bill, SB 15, that gives cities grants for seven years if they voluntarily rezone idle big box buildings for affordable and workforce housing. So, I think something like this should be definitely supported. The, I want to say that, I don't know if the League of California Cities supports this, but Livable California and United Neighbors definitely do. I'm part of those organizations, and we're an organization that looks for solutions to the affordable housing and homelessness crisis. For public safety, like I said, maybe that idea with the city Public Safety Commission, as well as the sheriffs to actively recruit members of the community to become interested in this, because, I mean, it's a really wonderful program. I haven't had the time, unfortunately, and due to the pandemic, I haven't had the luxury to join and be a part of it, but I, you know, those in the audience, definitely, when everything subsides, definitely register. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Sean.
Excuse me? Would it be okay if I gave a solution? I guess I'm out of turn here, but.
That would be fine. Let's make sure we have everybody off the Zoom, and then we'll turn back to anybody else who would like to speak.
Mayor, there's no one else on Zoom that has raised their hand at this time.
Eric, I think you're good to go.
Hello, I'm Eric Woggy. I'm here once again, so thanks for giving me the opportunity to come up and talk about the solutions. And when I contacted the sheriff, they, normally, they respond to the call right away for whatever it is I was doing. I had something weird happen. They actually referred me to the city, and so I said, okay, sure, that sounds fine. And I called the city, and they said, no, that's a sheriff issue. And so, there was a little bit of, I guess, a misunderstanding about how the, the public space was going to be cleaned, and I learned that maybe some hands are tied. They have to wait three days before it's designated a certain way. So, I wonder if maybe our regulations that we have in place used to work very efficiently for our community's issues and problems, but because, as the sheriff stated, the transient dynamics change on a daily basis, I wonder if new wordings and protocols can be, you know, determined that would maybe facilitate how problems can be addressed in a more timely manner? And I also think a great solution that I've experienced is the community interconnectedness. I'm friends with many of my neighbors that live on my street, and we can text each other from the safety of our home whenever we notice something strange happening outside. And I feel like my wife's connection to a Facebook group that's community-oriented, so, you know, residents within a certain area are permitted to be a part of this social media group. They oftentimes will be able to share information that's very helpful to residents to know about problems and trouble that they're experiencing, and I really appreciate the interconnectedness of our community. I feel like many of the crimes that are committed might be stifled if more of the residents are able to communicate with one another in a real fast and easy way. And the more I get to know the people that I live among, the more I enjoy their presence. And there was a time when I didn't necessarily know the people very much, and I was, I was very leery of them, but, you know, by being more open and associating with people in a, in a community environment, I now feel safer. So, I want that perception to spread and for the entire city to feel safer within that community, and I feel like a solution might be to promote interconnectedness. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers that would like to address this topic?
Yes, there's somebody behind you.
Again, Dave Milbrandt. We were talking about the issue of the situation that happened at San Dimas High School this past week, and about someone released from the hospital and then entering onto our premises. And I was having a conversation with a friend about when she had been released from a hospital and not having transportation back to her home at that time, and she had, was released at some time in the middle of the night. I was wondering if there would be a way for us to perhaps liaise with San Dimas Community Hospital and say, if someone's being released and they do not have active or accessible transportation, to have perhaps a list of services, like a dial-to-ride service or a community service, volunteers with our sheriff's department, or some way to say, we can help you get a ride to your residence. Now, that sounds like a nice community outreach plan, but in addition, it helps to get someone who isn't doing so well back to their home, perhaps so they can be calmed down and not want to act out or go somewhere else and engage in certain activities like we had happen in our space there. And I think it's a very simple way, not to force the hospital or compel them, but to say, we want to partner together by giving you a list of services and opportunities and vendors that might be able to help out. These people that are being released from the hospital get the assistance they need. Sort of a gentle way, that kind of connectivity that we just talked about, rather than a forceful way, trying to impose a policy, but in a gentle way, working together and then finding solutions that helps with both sides and addressing problems before they become problems. So, something small like that and solutions like that throughout the community might be helpful for various different problems. Simple things that can have big impact. So, that was my thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Gabriel, and I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that folks had said. Thank you very much for holding this meeting. Very courageous of you guys to kind of put out the strategic plan that you guys have talked about in making the city better. Councilmember Weber said, an amazing city, but as my old football coach said, if you're not getting better, you're getting worse, right? So, appreciate the constructive dialogue and allowing that public participation. Part of quality of life discussions is making tough quality of life decisions. You guys do that every week or every time that there's a second, fourth Tuesday, right? Every time there's a council meeting. One of the most important things about quality of life is also the ability to feel that your voices are heard, that the elected representatives are hearing your concerns, giving you the time of day, and then giving you that response back. Just one solution that I might add, as we, as we kind of dip out of, or slowly matriculate ourselves out of the COVID era, calling in. Some people can't come. I'm great, I'm so grateful that we have the 50% capacity. Some folks still can't come to the meetings. We'll be on Zoom or on telephone calls. As we saw on Tuesday, sometimes there's contentious issues. A lot of folks want to speak on it. I don't know if you guys knew, but your phone queue only has about six or seven that can line up, and once that fills up, folks start getting kicked off, or they call in, it goes right to voicemail. Folks get a little frustrated. So, it's, that's a little harder. It would be great if at some of these next meetings, as we're getting out of that COVID era, could we figure out a way to expand that phone line, so when folks call in, they're not kicked off or get frustrated. And also, on Zoom, you know, not all Zooms are created equal. Sometimes you can't find that raise the hand button. Some folks that were on it couldn't find it. Sometimes you got to go, you got to push the bottom right resource button, then it pops up, almost like a bunch of emojis, and then you figure out, oh, there's the hand button, and you hit it. Not as apparent and overt to a lot of folks. Wouldn't be a bad idea to just take some screenshots and put them either on the website or put them on the next agenda, so that when folks are looking at it and want to participate, sometimes that visual aid helps a little bit better. Folks don't get frustrated, the public process moves forward, and then those quality of life decisions can be made with great resident input. So, anyway, thank you for your time. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all our residents who spoke about the issues and the solutions. Clearly, there are more issues than there are. Clearly, there are more issues than there are solutions and that's part of the reason why we need a task force that's very broadly represented. And in the next slide on the presentation, we talk about some of those contributors to the Quality of Life Task Force. So with the assistance of the Community Development Director, Henry Noe, I intend to establish a staff-level Quality of Life Task Force comprising of a variety of city staff. Those staff members who are in a decision-making authority has had knowledge and ability and understanding of the wide variety of the activities within those departments, adding residents, business, interest owners and operators, nonprofits, including faith-based community members, and then inviting presentations or participation of content-specific representatives, depending on what the matter may be. Today, it may be homelessness in which we're inviting representatives from the county, nonprofits or other organizations that have innovative solutions to dealing with the impacts of homelessness. Tomorrow, it may be, how do we become entrepreneurial and grow our recreation program services to enhance opportunities for our community to enjoy this beautiful community and interact with their fellow residents? This is a task force that will continue, not for a short period of time, what I would hope would be in perpetuity in terms of then integrating the activities of commissions and integrating the activities of departments along the lines of these quality of life issues. In our next steps on the next slide, we will first start with the creation of that task force in which both the city management and the Community Development Department would take the lead. We will continue these public dialogues. We intend to go out and go to venues that are out in the neighborhoods and ask for the, for more input on quality of life issues and solutions. So we will look to the school districts to borrow some of their gyms and ask, community, can you come speak to us? Or the country club, or what would have been the clubhouse at the golf course, which we'll have to find an alternate venue there, to be able to have very broad input and opportunity for those who may not be easily accessible to here, going out to mobile home parks, senior centers and the like. We will then take that information, design a survey and put surveys out into the community to collect additional information that may be easier to be done by computer than it would be done to come to a public meeting. We will compile and analyze that information, categorize it and evaluate how we best can tackle those quality of life issues. That how best to address is what's going to be the difficult part that our task force will have to understand what the real issue is, how pervasive that issue is, and what is the real solution to the root cause, not what we may think, why don't you just do this? Because a lot of the times we face this where we have a problem and people are quick to see a solution and wonder why the city in their right mind would just not do it. When you look at that problem and you look at that solution, you realize it is far more complex than as simply stated as a solution. And that when you dig deep into what is the real root cause of that problem, that that solution may not be the best solution or that the solution has some nuanced hurdles, case law applicability to the problem that just does not make sense in the case of that issue. And then we will develop recommendations and action for both city management and the city council. Not everything that the task force will do will necessarily come up to the city council. A referral may go out to a commission. So an idea may go to the Parks and Rec Commission to discuss further, to solicit input and to provide back feedback that can help inform the task force on any recommendation that they're considering or to determine if something is something that should be recommended with the goal of having very broad-based support, well-thought-out analysis and strategic decision-making in those recommendations. So that is the conclusion of my report. And I want, what I want to say is to thank all those who participated, will participate and understand that this community desperately desires to continue the public dialogue, the engagement and to recognize that the electeds and city administration care about what the public thinks, wants and how we can more, most efficiently and effectively respond to those needs. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, thank you, Chris. I think everybody on the council wants to say thank you very much for everyone's participation. I'd like to make sure that the staff knows we appreciate the, the effort that they're putting in, into it. And I've received several messages saying, you know, thanks, thanks to the city, thanks to the staff for, for listening. And I'm quite sure that anyone who didn't get a chance to call in, feel free to call, you know, City Hall, either talk to the Assistant City Manager or the City Manager and/or any of the directors that would have, have that, that area of expertise, you know, Parks and Rec, Public Works. There is a new system going to be coming online very soon and I think it's going to help everybody in the community who wants to advise the city of a problem. It's called GoGov. And if you would take just one moment to explain that one, one more time, especially we have people here who may never have heard it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. GoGov is a, is a company that develop an application, a cellphone-based application and a web-based application that allows residents to submit service requests on a variety of matters to the city. For example, I come across a two-and-a-half-inch sidewalk lift that's a hazard to a pedestrian. I can take my cellphone, go to the application, which we're going to call MySanDimas so that it's easier for folks to remember, snap a picture of that photograph. It will geolocate using the coordinates of where you're at and allows you to move on the map to get a more precise location. Has some dropdowns to categorize the type of issue that is before us and allows us to add some comments and then hit submit. When I hit submit, it will go through a internal system of the city and get assigned to the appropriate staff person. The resident will be able to track every request that they make and will see the progress of that request. They may see that that request was scheduled to a specific person that's doing the work. They may see that this is, there's a long delay for a very good reason and they're going to see why that delay is occurring. And then they will see when it's either scheduled as a, by date or when it's completed and see a resolution. So therefore, there's a level of accountability that a resident can know. I don't necessarily have to pick up the phone, but I can. I don't have to go to the front counter, but I could, still could do that. In which case, I can now use the app or my computer. How does that relate to the Quality of Life Task Force? We will have a webpage strictly for the Quality of Life Task Force as we will have a webpage that's the MySanDimas to allow you to input. So you can follow along everything that we're doing and then submit more information, right down to submitting suggestions for improvement for the city, not necessarily just a service request. The other two modules of GoGov or MySanDimas, there is a GoNotify function, which is our public communication. It allows us to push out frequently asked questions to residents. It allows us to target specific neighborhoods to put out informations that are relevant to that neighborhood. For example, there may be an emergency in the Via Veria area and we could blast out to everybody's MySanDimas in addition to the website and our social media so that anybody who has the app will then get a notification on their phone regarding whatever that may be. And then I can then look at calendar of events, contact information, contacts that may be the county, all through just one location to service them. The last module is the code enforcement module that allows code enforcement to properly administer their function and do it in a more efficient and effective manner, all of which is tracked and accountable for the public.
Hey, thank you, Chris. Is there any questions from the city council to Chris by chance? No, I have no questions. But I would like to thank the audience for coming this evening. It was very enlightening, especially about the mobile home park. I think that's something nice to be done about that and I really appreciate that. And thank you and the people that phoned in, thank you very much. And the city manager, I think he did an excellent job. This is a great idea and it's something that we can really work on and improve the quality of life of people. And it's good for people to come and complain to the city council because that's the only way we know about certain things that are happening because we can't be everywhere at once. So thank you very much.
And Councilmember Breton, we will, we will reach out to those individuals for those specific problems that can be handled very quickly as opposed to something that would go to the task force.
I too wanted to thank the city manager for initiating this and to the public for engaging. And the public engagement part is, is the most important part here, at least at this stage. I, I like something that Chris said, I don't know if you caught it early on in his presentation, that the things you say now and the, the problems, especially the solutions, they're kind of all going into the hopper. So it sounds like, and this, I really like this, you're not going to make a suggestion and somebody's not going to say, oh, well, we already did that, oh, we can't do that, here's why. It's that, because that's often what the public hear. So this sounds like a little bit of a new approach. It's not necessarily new, but it's a great approach to emphasize that we are really looking for input. And so the outreach, whether it's on the website, I know the rec guy just came out, so there probably wasn't an article in it. But, but just any way we can, every day we talk to people or get emails and they've got something to say. And, or if we ask them something, and when I talk to people, I often say, you know, well, what else do you think about the city or what issue? And they'll always have something. So there's 35,000 people out there and probably 20,000 of them have ideas and things. And we really want to hear those ideas, the ways that, that Chris said to do it. And if you didn't catch any of that, just email City Hall or any of us and we'll, we'll, we'll get you, get you to the right place.
Eric?
You know, obviously, thanks to the community for coming out and thanks to staff for putting this together. I think above all else, that we have a very difficult course to navigate through all of these quality of life issues. If it were simple, then us and just about every other city in California wouldn't be, and across the country, wouldn't be dealing with these similar issues. But I think we're definitely on the right path and we have a lot of work to do ahead of us, both in the community and on the, the city side. So it's, it's time that we, we get to work. I'm very excited about the GoGov app. I think that's going to be a huge bridge between the community and the city. And, you know, we, we're on the right path and I'm very pleased with, with how this, this will turn out. I'm excited.
I too want to thank the community for coming out, especially all three modes of communications were used. The 50% of the audience was here. I want to especially thank those people who wrote very extensive emails and sent us with, sent us with some plans and some suggestions. They were very well thought. It's just, it wasn't somebody jot-down, you know, I'm upset with the homeless and the people who laid it out and, and on an email to point by point by point. And they threw out some really good suggestions and that staff, I'm sure, is looking at them and will talk about it. We're, we got a great community. But we could, you know, as the one man said, if you're going backwards, you know, if we're going forward and we still have a place to go, we got to continue. And I just believe that, you know, the council, I believe everybody on the council here has heard the community at one point or another, not necessarily just tonight, but on a continuous basis. And this was just the first step. And I too want to thank Chris and his staff for negotiating this and moving forward. And I can tell you right now, knowing our staff, our new staff directors and our new city management, they're not going to let this drop until, you know, they'll never be finished. You know, we won't ever finish it, but at least we can, we can move forward. And once again, thank you very much for, for coming out. And I realize that this is something new, but I understand we're going to be doing some of these town halls and offering the opportunity to more people to come out and talk with us. And I'd like to get to a point where we can move this thing to the plumber building, which we have a lot more seats and people wanting to, as we continue to negotiate through this pandemic. I believe there's going to be new rules coming out by June 15th. And, you know, I, I just want to say thanks to everyone. And at this time, I will move for an adjournment. Good night, thank you very much.